This conference will now be recorded.
Hello, so we'll call to order the Monterey Select Board. It's December 7th at 12:00 PM Newton and in present at Town Hall, Justin Maycock.
Susan Cooper.
And we don't have Scott Jensen yet, but we think he's on his way. Our first meeting is actually with the representative of Southern Berkshire Regional School District, who does not, who we're expecting remotely, but is not here yet.
Do we want to start the convo conversation about part-time police officer? Do we want to wait?
I want to, I want to speak with Marie, I think, next.
Okay.
Since she's here.
We might as well.
But I don't, I'm hesitant to begin that. Well, well, without Scott, but without, and then get interrupted by the noon meeting. So we'll just stand by, I think.
Okay. It doesn't matter how recently I've had coffee. Every time I smell your coffee and eating, I want more coffee. It's a sad testament to the universe.
Hi, Lindy. It's Melissa. I'm just checking to see if you were going to be logging on.
I don't mind. I like the new meeting.
You should be on any minute then.
Yeah, without, I usually do it at 6:00 PM anyway, but.
Yeah, I know. I hear you. They didn't want us to get past you in case you were like trying, there you go. All right. Thank you.
No kidding.
I know, right? She was one of our star, star people at Holy Cloud, like, yeah. Hi, Lindy. It's very sobering to think of people that in my head are still kids, but really, really aren't. It's so strange. The little kids that were like children in my wedding.
Okay, just a second.
Lindy, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can, but we can't see you.
I'm still, I'm still on my computer. It's pretty locked down in terms of default settings for camera and microphone, so bear with me while I click through here.
Hello.
We got duplicates today.
Thank you for your flexibility as well in moving to noon.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Yay.
And, and Scott is walking in as well, so we have everyone here.
Hello, senor.
Good afternoon.
So Lindy, the, would you like to start by speaking about the early college designation at Mount Everett? Or, and then you can follow up with questions?
Sure. So I recently took a position at Southern Berkshire Regional School District to be the early college and internship coordinator here for at least the year. This is, this is a grant-funded position that was created as part of the new wall-to-wall, full-impact early college program here at Southern Berkshire. And this is a national and state-level initiative to make sure that all students have exposure and access to college, should they feel like it's a good fit for them. And it also goes hand-in-hand with some internship work-based learning opportunities, as well as technical certification opportunities for professional certifications and training in more technical fields. This is something that 100% of the 9th through 12th grade students are pre-enrolled. It's the first year. This is our first year of implementation. And there's a three-to-five-year implementation period that's expected. So by the end of the third year, the program should be mostly up and running. And our higher education partner is Simon's Rock Bard College. Simon's Rock Bard College awards the college credit for college credit-level courses. So every one of, of our Mount Everett students who goes through high school here is expected to take at least a few college credit courses, mostly in 11th and 12th grade. And for now, those classes take place on the Mount Everett campus. But as soon as next semester, we're going to be sending students over to the Simon's Rock campus so that they can expo, they can experience what it's like to get, to get a sense of, of college, what it means to experience time on a college campus, both in, in class and outside of class. So, um, right now, Mount Everett has about 45, on average, students per grade level. So that means that on, at any given time, any given semester, we're expecting about 30 to 40 students this year to be enrolled in college credit classes. And right now, we have a humanities course, for example, and that also meets their high school graduation requirement. So they're taking their high school English at the same time they're being exposed to a college format for a course. And, um, yeah, I think it's going great. I, I think the program is, is off to a really great start. I wanted to make sure that everyone on the select board understood the new designation. It also came with a decent amount of funding support from the state. And, um, right now, we're in our visioning process, so lots of community feedback is welcome and encouraged. Our next community visioning event is in February, and I'll send a notice to the Monterey Select Board. I hope that everyone participates and, and gives feedback on what this school model should really look like and take advantage of to meet the needs of all students and especially students coming from Montclair, because you'd be most familiar with what they need. So I'll stop there and ask if there are any questions.
My first question is, so the additional costs of the program, the transportation, professors and staff, you mentioned a grant. Are all of those costs of the early college program being funded through the grant? Or are they reflected in the school budget?
Um, yeah, sorry, I'm just getting a little bit of feedback on this one. The, so the program costs are definitely mostly what I would call startup costs. So it's taking a decent amount of effort to get our schedule adjusted to accommodate for longer college format courses, which typically happen Tuesday, Thursday, or Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And courses with la, a lab component, like science classes, they typically run for about an hour and a half or two hours. So that meant some adjusting of schedules here at Mount Everett. Once the program is up and running, the state has essentially promised in perpetuity a credit reimbursement of $180 per credit. Most college courses are three or four credits, and that's something that's paid directly to our higher education partner. We're also working on getting Mount Everett teachers who meet the qualifications certified as early college instructors as well, so they'll continue teaching college credit and non-college credit classes here at Mount Everett. Does that answer your question? Are you looking for a dollar amount of something?
So I understand the reimbursement in the future. How is the startup of the program being funded? Is that through the grant funding?
Yes. So altogether, between our higher education partner and Southern Berkshire, we've already been approved for around $900,000 worth of grants for last year and this year. We're expecting additional support through the end of the implementation period around the same level. So that's, you know, $300,000 to $500,000 a year. But don't quote me on those numbers exactly. Their, their future numbers are not approved and they're not guaranteed. But based on what I'm hearing from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, it's something we should expect.
Another question I have is, I don't know how familiar you are with the eight-town regional school district planning board, but have there been any discussions as to the future of the early college program, depending on the outcome of the eight-town regional school district planning board outcome? Will the early college program be able to continue in a merged high school? Or have there been any discussions with Simon's Rock about that or the state?
That's a really good question. It has come up a bit. I asked the folks, the early college team at the state, and our wall-to-wall designation would be lost. We would have to re, a, a new school district would have to reapply for that designation. There are other early college programs that a merged district would likely qualify for, but that would be a different model. So what's referred to as an academy model, where a subset of high school students would participate in an immersive college or technical training experience, that would be, that would probably be the model that would be adopted in a merged district. Now, this has not been decided, but I would, from my perspective as program coordinator, I would, I would consider it unlikely that the full school wall-to-wall model would be implemented in a merged or a different district. It would be quite a process. It's possible, but it would take several years, the same way this designation took several years to get off the ground into this point.
Lindy, um, just want to make sure I totally understand this. So the suggestion is that every student at Mount Everett in the upper grades, whether they've shown predisposition, bracket, epic excellence or not, would still be encouraged or required, which, which one, to take a college-level class? I mean, does the school actually feel that every student is prepared to participate in college-level work?
That's a really good question. So it's a multi-year process. The short answer is yes. Every student is pre-enrolled. And to be honest, this program is targeting those students who would be least likely to participate in higher academia. That's the entire goal from the national and state level for this program, is targeting students who could, could benefit from exposure to find that they are interested in pursuing additional technical certification or additional, um, essentially degree program participation after high school. So what that means for Mount Everett students is there's a lot of additional support in place, starting in sixth grade, to get them ready for a college-level experience by the time they're seniors. So starting in sixth grade, which has taken effect this year, there's a new English Language Arts curriculum in place, and there's a new math curriculum in place, so that students starting, starting at that middle school level are on track for college-level coursework five or six years later. But beyond that, there are sample courses that middle school and ninth graders take to help them understand what a seminar-style course is or a lab-style course is. Field trips to colleges. In addition to training for all of our middle school and high school teachers to help them understand college preparedness or workplace readiness, including both academic skill building, like study habits building, ability to focus, ability to, to read, organize your thoughts, articulate yourself in writing, those kinds of things. Activities to connect classroom work to career opportunities. So understanding why you're going through these math lessons and how that connects to a job you might have in the future. And there are essentially the, the academic supports that maybe Susan, you're familiar with at Simon's Rock, including lots of advisory time, grades presented to students multiple times throughout the semester so they understand their academic standing. A lot of those tools are being borrowed from, from Simon's Rock. So yes, it's for all students. All students are pre-enrolled in this program, and all students are expected to participate. If students do not find success in the courses that meet high school graduation requirements, they can withdraw or drop a college-level course and receive only a high school grade. That's an option for students who decide it's just not working out. But if students are encouraged and pre-enrolled to participate, then they can, they can choose to opt out once they've had a little bit of experience.
Can you say a little about the apprenticeship part?
Sure. So sort of, this is something Simon's Rock is, is working to put in place as well as Mount Everett. So, um, internship, in, it's kind of a goal now to put all kids on a track to have some work-based learning experience before they graduate as well. And that, the goal is that work-based learning experience should be tied to what they're learning in the classroom. So understanding the connection between academics and career, and then getting that out of the classroom, immersive, hands-on experience, working for, ideally, a local business partner. We've partnered with Plaskalite, for example. That's a plastics manufacturing center down the road in Sheffield. Those students can, can participate in an internship there, learning about manufacturing, learning about information security, learning about what it means to do HR work, if that's what they're interested in. So building up those business partnerships and making sure that the early college instructors understand that students will be participating in experiences outside of the classroom, and we're hoping to make those connections.
And you think you can make enough of those connections that all students will, will be able to have?
I think realistically, we're going to be, we're going to be looking at hybrid experiences as well. My last job, where I was doing some technical work and consulting work for different tech companies, we had interns who were college interns, and they would join Zoom meetings once or twice a week, work on assignments, and submit them over the internet. And I think that's very likely going to be part of how the work-based learning gets implemented in a remote rural area. But the goal is definitely to get them outside of, of the school, physically onsite. It might not be every, it might not be every day or every time, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of interest from local businesses for job shadowing or short-term apprenticeships as well. Other questions?
I have, I have one. I haven't heard very much talk about the vocation. And my question is, who's going to fix your oil burner in 10 years? It's not funny, because one thing you guys are not teaching, one thing you're not teaching at all is the vote, you can roll your eyes if you don't like to hear it, but it's coming out of me, is that there is nobody coming behind me to take my hammer from me that knows a damn about the building trades. And when we graduated Mount Everett, we were able to walk out, secure a job, and run with our future. And I don't know anybody now that knows a damn about swinging a hammer, fixing an air conditioner, or any of these things. So don't just think that college is the answer, because there's so many kids at Mount Everett and other schools that are never, ever going to be college-bound. And they need to have vocational training drilled into them, taught to them by experienced, qualified candidates that can teach and who else, who are excellent at their fields. And until you guys figure that out, I don't think you've got a successful plan, because you're ignoring half, possibly, maybe not quite half, but you're ignoring a huge percentage and population of not only South County, but the country as a whole. So I'm, I'm really all excited about kids going to college and learning as much as they possibly can, believe me. Don't, I understand. It's as important as breathing. However, the trades are being ignored, and that will be our failure for this community. Because if everybody that has a college degree, where are they going to work around this area? You know where they're going? They're moving. And when they move, who do they take with them? Their spouses and their young children, because they can't make earnings here, because there's no real business that is trying to tout experienced college degrees, whereas there are plenty of businesses suffering for qualified candidates in their early twenties that can create a career and run with it, create a creed.
Career.
A career, and I said the R backwards. So I'm, I just want to, you guys to really fully understand my stance on it, and I believe there's many other select board members throughout the community and people throughout the community that are really adamant about getting the vocational and technical education that these kids are so, they're just being denied, and it's a shame.
I'm really, I'm really glad you brought that up. So you're right. I, I am very much a proponent of, of practical, technical skill building. One example course, and it's, it is technically a college course, so that means that students are going to receive college credit for this, is a timber framing course. So as a participant of that course, you go out and you build a structure, and you learn timber framing techniques and skills and how to use tools. Now, I think it's, it's misleading to say that this college program is just for career academics, so we're not, we're not trying to prepare kids to go out and spend their whole life in academia and become college professors. That, that is not the goal of this program. The goal is to prepare students for what comes after high school. And in a lot of cases, we are working with, like I said, the, the community partners and business owners. And we're also partnered with the Berkshire Workforce Board. The Berkshire Workforce Board is keeping track of all the labor statistics and advising us on how to train kids to meet the labor demands of the region. So our, the Berkshire Workforce Board is part of Mass Hire, which is the state-level program that keeps track of labor statistics and workforce demands, specific to workforce skills that are in highest demand. So we're, we're not ignoring that. What you brought up is incredibly important. I'm originally from Berkshire County. My, my mom worked as a nurse and my dad worked as a, and a car mechanic. And I can see the, the need, right? There's, there's fewer and fewer people who can fill those types of positions around here, and it's not off of our radar at all. That's a big part of why, why I'm here. The, the idea of college accreditation for certain courses is to take some of the, the fear away from pursuing, to the fullest extent, your career opportunities while you're still young. And that's very much in line with what we hope students will build up the skills and certifications they need to run businesses in Berkshire County. I hope that addresses your concern, or, and if you have any other questions, please feel free to email. And I can tell you about the programs that we have in place. And again, there's visioning sessions coming up in February and May and over the summer. So specific feedback on what you'd like to see implemented. I know we've got a crazy workforce housing situation unfolding in the Berkshires, and I think students could be part of the solution for that as well.
So based on the apprenticeship program that you mentioned, you said, am I mistaken? Did you say that some students are going and doing apprenticeships at Sheffield Plastics?
They have not started their internship experience there yet, but they're on track to do so. So it's Plaskalite now. It's the same building and, and facility as used to be Sheffield Plastics, but now it's owned by a company called Plaskalite.
Okay. And that's going to start in, in January or next fall or?
Next fall. So we're working on building out, there's a lot of, there's a lot of levels to that manufacturing company. I think they're headquartered out in the Midwest. So we're working with them on pretty detailed plans and syllabus and schedule. And there's also require, safety requirements that we have to meet to send kids into a manufacturing facility. So that's expected to start up next fall, where students are actually onsite. But, but this semester, students are taking 3D printing and manufacturing courses as part of their ninth and 10th grade experience. So by 11th and 12th grade, they're ready to actually contribute in the manufacturing facility itself.
So in that, in that same vein, if students are doing apprenticeships at what was Sheffield Plastics, could, if, if the school district found local contractors, like electrical contractors, HVAC builders, whatever it may be, would they be able to set up students with apprenticeships at those, like, trade jobs?
Yes, definitely. I mean, that's, so I've only been working with the district for a few months now, but that's a big part of my role here, is building up what I think they termed an internship task force throughout Berkshire County, and getting business owners on the list for hosting internship and apprenticeship, student internships and apprenticeships. So yes, and if you have anyone in mind, please send them my way.
So, and realistically, do you think that's something that could be seen next fall or the following year? Students interning, you know, under contractors, do you think it will get held up due to safety regulations and scheduling? So you think it's like a realistic possibility that we'll see Mount Everett students interning under tradespeople next, next few years?
There are a few already taking place now. Insurance and, and safety are some of the biggest barriers, for sure. So smaller, smaller contractors in the Berkshires carrying insurance to cover young students is, is one of those really big barriers. So, um, but we've seen it happen, and I'm working with, like I said, the Berkshire Workforce Board to understand how we can make more hands-on student learning a possibility soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lindy. It looks like we're out of questions.
Yeah, thank you so much. This was, this was really just the, the introduction of the program, that I wanted to make sure that everyone knew what was going on and what our goals are. It's just kicking off this fall, and I will, I'll come back and, and report to you how it's going, maybe at the end of the year or a year from now. But it's all, it's all, I think, it's a new model of education that we're trying out. And for a rural area, we're going to have to get really creative. So, uh, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Sorry, Lindy, one last thing. If you report back to the school committee or, you know, the early If you report back to the school committee or, you know, the early people who are planning the early college program, I think it would be fair to say that, you know, you can say that the Monterey Select Board is happy about the early college designation and is also hoping that Mount Everett will take their due diligence to place students with contractors and tradespeople for apprenticeships in those trades fields.
I definitely think that all three of us would be particularly supportive of a plan that involved internships or apprenticeships with all the trades. So that's very broad, but everything from automotive to plumbing, et cetera. Because there's a huge need. And, you know, I remember teaching robotics to fourth graders in Southern Berkshire. And I had some kids in there that could, I mean, maybe they're out in the workforce now. It's a lot of years later. I don't know the follow-up, but would have made great plumbers or probably in one case, an engine designer, right? So that would have involved school. But I don't know, he might not have been likely to choose school because it wasn't a comfortable environment for him. But he had immense talent. So there are kids, I don't think we should be devaluing the trades. There are, like, I don't think we do anyone a service when we do that. And I don't think, as a college teacher, I don't think everyone was really meant for a college environment. There's plenty of good ways to be a very productive person and a very successful person without necessarily going to college. I'm a college teacher. I don't want to undermine people that are going to college. But I definitely am on board with the idea that we should include a broader definition of what's valuable work and not be thinking that every kid needs to go to college. Because every kid might not want to go to college.
Thank you for your time, Lydie.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And I will, I'll report back at least in a year. But if you have any questions in the meantime, you can also, you can email me or I also monitor internships at SBRSC. You can pass out that email address to any tradespeople who would be willing to host an intern. And I will do my best to find kids who would be a good fit.
Thank you.
That's good to know. That's great to know. Bye.
So I think if everyone's on board, we can jump to new business. Because I see Marie Ryan is present and
Thanks for tuning back in.
Willing to be the interim town.
I was just doing some other work while I was waiting.
Yeah. So Marie, you've been in Monterey Town Hall and been in the clerk's office and you're willing to serve as an interim town clerk for Monterey?
Oh, definitely. Yep. We'd love to help out.
It sounds like you could be in the office on Tuesdays and Thursdays after late afternoons or so?
Yeah, not any Thursdays until the next couple of Thursdays. Because I didn't know I was going to be doing this. I have other issues. But definitely on the Tuesdays and any other time that people need to meet by appointment or whatever, I can certainly do that as well.
Does anyone have any questions?
I had to update the leader and chat with her, so I feel like I asked most of the questions I had.
Thank you, Marie. I'm just thankful. I have no questions.
Yes.
We discussed pay and hours per week and a length of an appointment. As long as she wants it.
Marie, I recall that you thought five minutes, five hours a week.
Yes.
And what was the salary? At $30 an hour?
Yeah. I think, and then one of the points, you know, like when you start having some of your senses come back in, I'll stay longer. I just, you know, I'd just like to help keep you above board and keep all your things running smoothly. And I just, I love doing clerk work and so I'm very excited to help you out.
Melissa, can we have the balance remaining in the account?
Yeah, I can go over that with her. I don't have it readily available.
It doesn't look like we have enough to cover the normal hours that Terry had been doing.
Oh, yeah. Well, not completely.
Not entirely.
Right. No, but she's going to be doing 14 hours less.
Well, possibly. I don't think we should set it five hours.
I think you should say approximately five hours a week.
What I was going to suggest, I don't know what you think about this, Marie, was authorize up to 10 hours per week. And then if you needed more than 10 hours per week, you could let the town administrator know. And that might work, I think, because, you know, it sounds like you could probably get it done most weeks in, well, under 10 hours. But if, like you said, some weeks you're spending more. And then if you really do need 15 or more hours a week, then at least we'll know that that's the case. And we could go from there, but authorize up to 10 hours per week, or 30 an hour.
With the caveat that if there's more needed, it's just a request from her office to the DA.
Yeah.
Do you think a three-month probationary period is good for now? Or do you think they should go longer? Because I know you said to me last night that you would help train someone once we put that out.
I think we could play it by ear. I think, say, three months for now would be good. I could get your census done and your dog, you know, get all that kind of stuff done for you. Help you with any, if you have any, like, or maybe you might have a special town meeting, things like that. And during that time period, maybe you could figure out what you're going to do. And certainly, once you hire someone, I'm more than happy to come and help training them as well after that.
One other question, Marie. Do you think that you would be able to provide us with at least a few office hours? I know that you would be, you know, able to come in if someone needed something. Like you might be able to meet them at a different time. But would there be some hours on Tuesday at late afternoon evening that we could be able to post?
Yes.
That people, you know?
Yeah. So after the holiday, because like I said, I didn't know this was coming up. So the month of December, I have some other arrangements. And but after the first of the year, I will definitely be able to give Melissa, I'm thinking most likely like 3:30 to 6:00 or something like that on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Would it be possible for us to post just the Tuesday, 3:30 to 6:00 in the interim? Just so people know when they can get a clerk? Or do we, we cannot post and then we can direct them to contact the clerk by email? But we just want to know if we can post anything even in the holiday period. I don't know how big demand is, but.
Yeah, I mean, I have access to the emails and stuff. I mean, you could put, you know, if you, at least for the month of December, you could put if they need to contact me for anything, then I could tell them when I'll be there for sure. Because the month of December, like I said, I have a lot of things already scheduled. Then once I come back after the first of the year, definitely I'll set hours. And then we'll put it right on the website. Usually I find all town halls pretty much, like the week between Christmas and New Year's is pretty quiet. So I don't, you know, I have vacation that week. So if somebody really needed something, I'm not going anywhere. I could certainly make a time to come in and meet, you know, meet with them and help them or whatever. That's not a problem.
Where have you been all years?
Better than in Zuckridge, West Zuckridge.
All right, so, thank you. I would move to appoint Marie Ryan as the interim town clerk for a period of three months at $30 an hour for up to 10 hours per week. And if more hours are needed in a given week, Marie will contact the town administrator to approve the request for more hours. Is there any other discussion? All right, I'll call a vote on the motion.
Yes, please, and thank you, Marie.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval. And thank you for stepping up, Marie.
Of course. I'm happy to help. I'm happy to help. I will see you Tuesday.
Yes, and then we will, starting in the new year, post office hours tentatively 3:30 to 6:00 on Tuesday and Thursday, but that can be subject to change. Starting in the new year, though.
Yeah.
And right now, it will be people can call or email.
Yeah, and I do plan on coming in at least the Tuesdays between now and the end of the year.
Should we post that? You're going to be in on Tuesday, 3:30 to 6:00, or should we hold off on that?
You know what? Why don't I double check everything? And I'll tell Melissa on Tuesday when I come in. Is that okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Happy to help.
Have a good one.
Have a good week.
One question before you leave, Marie, if it's not. So along the lines of what Scott was saying, I thought it might be helpful if Gary Shaw is willing to hold office hours. That would be good, I think.
So we talked to Gary and I talked to Marie about this. We'll let her audit the office first to make sure everything is in place. And then if she decides she needs something from Gary or needs help, we will reach out to him and do that. We want to let her go in there with a fresh set of eyes with no one else having access to anything.
Yeah, I mean, and it's not so much, I mean, given that you're an accredited town clerk and have been a town clerk for many, many years, I'm not saying that I think that you need help from Gary Shaw. It's more so to supplement the office hours so that people can drop in and drop off paperwork or, you know, whatever. I mean, we've always emphasized recently, having office hours available to the public. And let's, in the next couple of weeks, maybe you'd get back to us on how you think that might be able to be set up so that we can have more office hours open to the public, like maybe Saturday mornings or something, depending on when Gary is available.
Yeah, definitely. I do talk to Melissa about meeting with him. I'd like to know the kinds of things that he's been doing in the office so that we can, I can kind of figure out what works.
Thank you.
Okay, definitely. Okay, y'all set up?
Have a great day.
Have a nice day.
So I hate to jump her.
I just want to add Melissa's sentiment as to having a fully cleaned slate. It may be time to actually think about a fully cleaned slate. Where any assistant is a new assistant.
She's led me to believe that we don't need an assistant.
Well, that may be so.
My concern was not the work getting done. My concern was that we're going from offering 19 plus, or 17 office hours public can come in to five.
For this month.
Yes, but I don't think her schedule is fraying up anytime soon.
Because she has a full-time TA.
And my concern, my concern is the return of of a potential conflict that may never end if we don't clean it up.
We just want things to be clean. Let's let her assess the office. I don't disagree with you that ultimately we could have more. I mean, if we need it, I don't know. I guess some towns have hardly any.
Keeping the citizens.
Yeah, just the door open. The door open. But I think in this interim period, let's let her do an assessment and then think about what, how many hours we think we want someone in the office and what other options we could have. Because if it really, let's imagine it's, I'll even be generous and say 10 hours, even if it's not 10 hours every week. Then we can decide how many hours do we want a face available to the public and when do we want that? And I had the impression when I spoke to her that she's not thinking, like, she has a full-time job. She's happy to help out. I don't, in a way, it's good if we have someone who is willing to assess the office. But she's not designing her job, right? She's designing someone, helping to craft someone else's job. There's no question of, you know, like she's designing for someone else. Do you know what I mean? So it gives us a chance to just have a clean slate and know that it's set up to win and meet all our needs. And we can figure out if we need, in this hiring environment, if it's hard to find a part-time person, what do we have to craft instead to make it desirable and keep people? So I totally get that. But it might be that we could figure out a way to do it that will meet lots of needs. But let's give her a chance to assess.
I want her to have all the chance in the world. I just don't want to see any leftover bidders come back into town.
But that would be nice.
Yeah, I mean, we spent, we spent the better part of the past half a year, you know, working with the town clerk to get office hours available to the public during the day. At night, we talked about weekend hours. So to then not think that office hours don't matter is, I don't think, an option.
I don't think any of us think that office hours don't matter. I think we're all extremely concerned that the citizens have what they need.
Yes.
My concern, on the other hand, is that town hall has what it needs. To have the potential of continued conflict in that office due to the staff is absurd. I'm not saying that there will be or is, but I think that needs to be something that we address. And who is working in the office, if there's still contempt or any other issues left over, I would say now is the time to eradicate that. It's like killing dandelions. You don't cut the top off, you go to the root, you get the whole thing. So here's our opportunity. We weren't, we were given this opportunity. We didn't create it. We didn't fire anybody. So we're not creating a hardship for people that was created and we're responding to it the best we can. And if in the interim, we're able to totally get that office after a couple of years of ceremonial back to an office that is, the door's open and it's happy amongst everybody that commingles, that is our, that should be our primary goal, in my opinion.
I think the only other thing that should be considered, I really do think, and I think resolving and eradicating interpersonal conflict from the town hall is a great goal. If this, if we can do that, we need to do that. I think the only other thing to consider is, and I know it's an interim transitional period, but if someone's supervisor resigns, that shouldn't, I mean, to talk about respecting your employees. Yeah, but you understand what I'm saying. We can't just say, yeah, your supervisor resigned, you don't have a job. Right? In some ways, but there is such a thing as restructuring and I know this is transitional period. I just.
Well, we're all open to the, we all understand the issue.
I'd just like to have a sense of what we actually need. And I have no regrets, Gary, but I think we're going to get that. And I don't want to make any decisions without having.
You know, I don't want to have any Gary maybe listening and I wouldn't be surprised if he is. So, you know, I don't want him to feel like there's anybody here that's against him. We're all 100% for the man. He's been great, he's been great in what he's done. I just want to make certain that there's no lingering animosities. So that's all.
All right. Part-time, we are going to jump back to old business. We only jumped ahead because Marie was here. But the first item of old business is the part-time police officer hourly rate increase. So we've got from Brian surrounding towns and what they're offering. Part-time police officers, the request in Monterey is to increase the current rate for the part-time police officers from $21.79 an hour to $25 an hour effective January 1st. I think it is probably, oh, I mean, actually, if other people want to speak.
I guess my question is, do we have any inclination as to what these surrounding towns are looking at for their upcoming years' budget for their pay.
Not with the same now, but with the new pay.
Right, their futures, because that's really all we're doing now, is we're just jumping ahead.
Yeah, and I think that's, my sense is that we will be ahead of the curve if we jump to 25. Yeah, and I think that's, my sense is that we will be ahead of the curve if we jump to twenty-five, and that's not a bad thing, because like Brian mentioned, everyone has to go through bridge training if you wanna stick with it. So really, what, what we were paying was for people who had less training, and now they have more training.
So there's, it's, we'll be essentially paying for an officer.
Right, it's the same, it's, it's the same rate as the full-time officers, but the full-time officers receive benefits, so it's, it's much lower, kind of, but it's the same dollar.
So, I mean, especially given the shifts involved.
Which are not considered the gravy shifts.
Right, so, uh, you know, it's kind of in keeping with at least three of the towns.
And like I say, and we don't know what these towns are about to do, I mean, we know every one of them's gonna go up. I can't imagine that they stay neutral.
And they're gonna have the same issue because of the bridge training, whatever the else does, so I think it makes sense.
I think we're just fortunate that we have this opportunity also before us to get the police department to where they are content and happy, and that the people that are patrolling their town are also content and happy to be here, rather than turning a blind eye towards something because they feel, you know, screw this, I'm only making twenty-two an hour at three AM in the morning on a Christmas Eve or something. So, I mean, I, if you're making a motion, I would second that, raise it to that amount. If it wasn't a motion, then perhaps we'll.
Do you, you wanna make the motion?
I would make the motion that we move to approve the future chief's request to bring pay scale up to twenty-five an hour.
Effective January first.
Yes.
I'll second the motion. Is there any other discussion on that? All right, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes, so that's a unanimous vote to approve the part-time hourly rate to be increased to twenty-five dollars an hour effective January first, twenty-twenty-three. The next item of business is the tax software upgrade request, which I thought we might discuss at yesterday's joint meeting, but it, it ended up being the Finance Committee discussed it at the time. So.
Did they discuss it?
They did.
And what was.
And the, not verbatim, but they recommended spreading the upgrade cost over three years, contingent upon upgrade being necessary.
Yeah, well, I suppose, down the list as you can get.
So, but basically, they were unclear on exactly what was being asked, and I said, well, the first question is, do we wanna upgrade to the new system, and the second question is, if we do it, do we wanna pay forty-five hundred or fifteen hundred over three years? And.
And after last night's meeting, I, I think fifteen over three is a better way to go, because it seems like there's a lot of manring in, coming forward in this next budget.
Yeah, so I would move that we commit to the upgrade of the QDS Core Services Tax Software for the, with the upgrade fee split over three years for fifteen hundred dollars a year.
Second.
Is there any more discussion on that? We'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval. Do you have a folder? I don't have a copy of that for you, because I know they need a signature. And then, there's a little checkbox to say we need the fifteen hundred for every.
With the first number three that we're about to discuss.
Yes.
Where was your original question that you posed that she answers here?
On page five.
So that, what, the answer is on one and the question is on four?
So, the original questions that we discussed last week are on page four and five. And then everything goes chronologically forward from there, and basically, what we've learned, the way that I interpret it, is that we can delegate the oversight of the wiring and plumbing gas inspectors to the building commissioner, who can assign an alternate or assistant to do an inspection if that, if they deemed necessary.
If they deem that it's either a conflict or an illness.
Yeah, or they fill the wall for one or another.
You believe that the, the reason why this was put before us, that Nick was incorrect in the, in his assumption that he was it, and nobody has the authority to ask somebody else to inspect.
No, I think we'd have to adopt that. We could adopt it, but haven't yet adopted it.
So, no, because she said on the first page, at, at this time, before the adoption of forty-three C thirteen, that's before the.
The first page here, okay.
Number one.
Right.
The select board or the town administrator if delegated to her. Also, from previous emails, it could be the building commissioner, I can double-check with her on that, I, but I think we are also allowed to delegate to the building commissioner.
Okay.
Assigns the assistant alternate to do an inspection, that right is not reserved for the primary inspector, she meant inspector.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
So then, we can double-check, I don't expect us to make any decisions today.
Right.
The question today is more so, are we still interested in adopting a consolidated department, which I was confused, again, you'll see, if you have time to go through the emails, you can adopt a consolidated department for inspections, where all inspections, so that would be, go through one person, so that would be health inspections, Conservation Commission inspections. They, one person wouldn't do all of them, but they would oversee all of those people, to the extent that they're doing inspections. I told Donna, I said, I don't think that's what we're looking for in Monterey, so we can make a consolidated inspections department where the building commissioner would oversee the inspector wires and inspector plumbing gas, if we want.
Zoning, building, plumbing, gas and wiring, and then we could leave Concom, Health, and anyone else.
And.
Or we could.
Fire code, historical commission.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I, it, it's just like, just be at his office, inspectors that he works.
Yeah.
See, I always thought they didn't work for him, but that they work for the town. But listening to, to the way Nick expressed it, is that he was pretty adamant that he and he alone is the inspector or his alternate, and nobody has the authority to appoint or to request somebody else to do the inspection that he is duly licensed in and made to uphold.
So one thing I haven't done, which I probably should do after this meeting, is Nick provided a Massachusetts general law, and I would figure that Donna would be aware of those kinds of things, but I can cite exactly what he was referring to and say. But the way, I mean, the way she writes it, because the select board appoints the wiring inspector, we, or whoever we delegate that authority to, so the town administrator or the building commissioner, could assign the assistant slash alternate to do an inspection, and that right is not reserved for the primary inspector.
So we would literally override his authority and send in somebody else.
Well, I think we wouldn't do it in frivolous ways, but, but we could have a guideline, you know, I think there's certain timeframes, right? If you submit, you're ready to, you're ready for your electrical roughing, and they need to come in forty-eight or seventy-two hours, or whatever it may be, and if they don't come, maybe then Don can put in place for the alternate to come. In theory, it's just right now, only because that authority has already been delegated.
How that works, so. I'm, I'm good with that thought line, just wanna make certain that we do have Don to at least approve what we're thinking of approving.
Well, and the way she, the way she put it, if we wanted to go forward with this route, instead of the wiring and plumbing gas reporting directly to the town administrator select board, they would report to the building commissioner, and the building commissioner could set forth guidelines. I know there are already state guidelines, but if there's a forty-eight hour timeframe, and twenty-four hours into that, you know that you, you know, meet the forty-eight hour, you have to let the building commissioner know at which point he will assign an alternate. Or if you're going on vacation, you need to let the building commissioner know, and he will assign alternates as inspections come on.
Right, and it could be the alternate that that inspector has.
Already chosen.
Chosen, yeah.
Yes, I mean, I think, how many alternates do we have?
There's usually just one per.
I think we have two for.
Gas.
I mean, we could have more than one assistant slash alternate for inspector, but usually, I mean, of one.
Every town, like, some, some of these guys do multiple towns, so there's all, and some of them don't, so the ones that don't, there's somebody doing, say, Otis, that may not be Nick, they could possibly come in and do ours.
If we need the.
Right.
Right.
So that would also be beneficial if the building inspectors or commissioner offices in the surrounding towns are kind of in on that same thing, so that it's like a rambra, and who's available.
Yes, so, I can follow up with Donna and send her the, the Mass General Law that, that Nick had cited, to double-check. And then, next week, if we wanted to, we could delegate the supervision of the, of the plumbing and gas and electrical inspectors to the building commissioner, which I think is what everyone assumed was already the case.
I, I did, I thought that he has the overall control. It would probably be in the office's best interest to have those other alternate or those other primary inspectors be part of the conversation.
I was just gonna say, I think I'd rather get by in before we do it, rather than.
But they understand, anything that, if Donna says, no, it's incorrect, and here's why, well, it may take a bit to, uh,
So, do you, I, I'm happy to reach out, I've never spoken with either of the primary inspectors, I'm happy to do that and get their, their feedback.
Do we wanna wait to see what she says about that?
Yeah, and then depending on what I hear, I can reach out to them.
So after, let's bring this back up next week.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll have Donna's viewpoint on it.
Yeah.
And then after that, we can formulate how we wanna go about doing it, and then I can reach out to Bob, Don, and Nick, and try to explain what the process is, is going to be, or is what, at least what we hope it to be.
Right.
You know, I mean, I said we wanted somebody to quit, because, you know, they feel like they're toes in me and stuff, and, I mean, I think it's important that they understand that this isn't a power grab. This is a, a way of getting things done without animosities and without any, you know, I mean, I, I don't know how I would feel if I was, if I happened to have been the electrical inspector and had to go back to that same site, with knowing that somebody was angry at the way I had inspected or did something and created that fluffle, so, you know, I, I, I don't want them to, I don't want anybody to feel like we're stepping on their feet.
And if, if an inspector legitimately finds a problem, and the person just complains, I don't know that that's cause to send another inspector. For me, it would be mostly about if they can't, if they're not getting there in the timeframe, because that's really not okay for the people that are doing a project, but if they find a problem, the problem has to be dealt with.
Problem's problem.
Right, the problem's a problem, and if the person didn't like the way the inspector spoke to them, I mean, I hate to say this, but a lot of people just don't like hearing no, you could say it as nice as you please, and they're gonna be mad that you told them they couldn't do it, right? And, and I don't, so, I, I kinda see it both ways, it's not okay to be rude, but sometimes people feel it was rude just because they got told no, so, not having been there when a conversation took place, I don't want someone replaced because they found a legitimate problem.
No, 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 and that would, that should never happen.
And, and I know Don is very particular about his inspections, and he, when he catches a real problem, it's a real problem.
From what I've heard, they're all.
Yeah.
Good inspectors.
Right.
Never had an issue with any of them, I mean, I've had things that are told, you, you need to modify this, or this, or this, or don't do this until I come out and look down on the home, make sure it's actually forty-eight inches deep, that's fine.
Yeah.
I think they're all top shelf, I really do, all three of those guys are, we're really fortunate that we have them in this area, the age, working as well as inspector.
So, but, yeah, I think it would be really good to have a conversation with them before we make the change, just, and, you know, if we have to modify how we're gonna make the change, we can do that, or maybe we can just get them to buy in once they understand.
And we don't need to, I just think, there's, I think it makes sense for the building commissioner because of his background and his role to supervise the wiring and plumbing gas, but maybe that's not the case.
I mean, I didn't do it, to me, it's.
To me, it makes sense.
Right.
We just wanna make sure everyone buys into it and, you know, ruffle too many feathers.
I will follow up with Donna and maybe preliminarily reach out to the other inspectors and see what input they might have.
More than one conversation with them isn't a bad idea.
And. Yes, so the next item is the police chief contract. So I've had some, I mean, I think we all agree we want this to be sent to Donna, and I think the assumption is that everything in here is right about benefits and compensatory time and sick leave and discharge. I just thought that those are areas that I, I highlighted for Donna to look at in particular. I did have a couple of questions, really for Brian, but maybe Melissa can work on them, so the first one was just about the on-call pay.
Brian didn't tell you that it was gonna be my, right? As far as my conversations with him, it's gonna continue for the week.
Okay. I thought the schedule wasn't necessarily like that, I thought he was doing it along with the other two full-time officers, but he's taking half of the shifts?
It's still gonna be Sunday to Saturday, is my understanding.
Okay.
That you're on-call for the, on May ninth to eighth.
And is it gonna be, because here it says thirteen weeks of Brian.
Yeah, that's the only part I need to correct, is, because this was.
Dull.
Right.
Yeah. So if he's gonna be, I'm not trying to exempt it, but I just wanna make sure that it's right, if we can figure out how many weeks, if he's doing a third of the weeks, because right now it says he's doing a half, and I don't think he's doing a half.
Right.
The other.
Yeah, so that one, I would suggest maybe just putting the word exempt in there, because either saying the chief of police, an FLSA exempt position shall receive, or adding it after.
Where are you?
On the compensation.
Compensation, that first paragraph, because it says all of the benefits as do full-time employees, but.
Or right there saying all of the benefits as do full-time exempt employees, so it's clearly he's exempt.
Yeah, and I mean, I didn't, I don't think there's gonna be confusion, I just wanted to clarify, and maybe Donna also had, has thoughts on that. I did add in that first paragraph, you know, Donna will probably say whether this is right, or the way it was written before is right, but in that very first, well, I guess the second paragraph, but the select board and Brian, they need to be clear, but, and I, and I added, I don't know whether this is good form or not, but the position is also governed by the job description and Massachusetts general law.
Right, oh, you're saying that, it's the very first, very, very top of the first page, that second paragraph. So the, the underlying portion is.
Is what he added.
What he added, okay.
I just. I just capitalized chief, and then, here's, here's a couple ones that are just operational questions that the board might weigh in on, and maybe Brian, and, depending on the board besides Brian.
What page?
The, dude, sorry, I'm not good at saying the page, page two, number four.
Okay.
The chief still give reports to select board either orally or in writing when requested, or at a minimum four times a year. I don't, I'm hesitant, I don't know whether I wanna put that in or not, and maybe you could all could weigh in, I mean, I think it will naturally be more four times a year.
Would it actually be to me, because he reports directly to me?
Yeah.
Like, they used to, man, just give us.
He gives you one in the mail there that you can look at?
That we probably, and have the whole line.
But we get, but we get, that's call, but we're looking.
It was that also.
Well, I don't know what you were getting, but what we've been getting for the past, since I've been on the board, is a monthly or bi-weekly or whatever it ends up being, call log. I'm looking for a report, so on, are there any issues with the vehicles, anything going on with the vehicles, how is the staffing? You know, are people leaving, coming, just an overall report, not just a call log.
Which could. Unless, I mean, it doesn't mean we couldn't read it if he's writing it up.
Well, I mean, it could be back to be. Well, I mean, it could be something that's.
But I agree, I like the idea of a report, and it could include things that they, you know, whatever, what they'd like to. Projects are ongoing or whatever, yeah.
We can change, we could make it to the town administrator, or we could make it to the town administrator and select board, but Melissa is right, the police chief does report.
I think it's the TA.
I think it's the TA.
To the town administrator.
It's not like, I mean, you know, if we tell Melissa we want to see it in our, in the little folder that we look at every day.
Should we get rid of, or, I mean, what do you think about the minimum quarterly report? Should we delete it?
When would we do it then?
For a time to year. I mean, right now it just left up to no specified timeline.
I think we, we don't technically get a report really unless we ask him to come in to tell us about something.
Are you saying that we, that we leave that quarterly for times a year in there or strike it out?
Well, I'd put a name in, but I'm open to taking out.
In other words, do you like the idea of a quarterly report, or should we just leave it open? I think we leave it. I like it too.
As in there.
Yeah.
And not anything else, not one requested. Or you say it's just as it's written, boom, up to quarterly per year. And then the rest is, it's obvious what it's for.
Yeah.
Right, so you cross out the proper communication to the select board and police board.
So it will read as so, the chief shall give reports to the town administrator either orderly, orally, or in writing when requested, or at a minimum.
I think it's gonna be in writing.
Yeah, because if it's in writing, then we could see it too.
So it will read, the chief shall give reports to the town administrator in writing when requested, or at a minimum quarterly four times per year. Should it, I don't want to make it wordy because we just took the words out, but could it specify just reports on the state of the police department? Or is that too obvious? We don't need that. I added one ten, which again, I'm curious to see. The one before is about he's being in charge of all the police officers in the town of Monterey, and will meet with them on a regular basis. Later on in the contract, number ten?
Yeah.
Later on in the contract, it had mentioned professional growth, development, education, and training of the police chief. I thought we might add the chief shall be responsible for encouraging, allowing for the professional growth, development, education, training of all the police officers on the police.
Oh, that's good.
I changed the police, yeah, in thirteen, used to be number twelve, now it's number thirteen.
Right.
It had said is required to appear and before town meetings when necessary to, is required to appear.
Yeah, I should have taken out, right?
No, because it's confusing.
I know, but.
Shall be available for hearings before any border town at which the police department is required to appear, comma, and before all annual town meetings and special town meetings when necessary. Because there's always a police department budget in the annual town meeting budget, and we always know when it is, it's the first Saturday. Some special time meetings, it may not be required and some it may. Are we on board with that?
Works for me.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's the new thirteen.
That's the new thirteen. We might need to work on the wording a little bit because it gets all clumsy like we identified. Fifteen used to be fourteen. We added to the job description harbor master, I didn't, the one above is about animal control officer. Instead of including but not limited to, we could just end it at the chief shall perform the duties of the harbor master, period.
That makes it simple.
Should we change the one above to the chief shall perform the duties of the animal control officer? Because there's mass general law.
No, I think you should.
Okay.
Because mass general law says what those positions do.
Right, yeah, you kind of want.
So including but not limited is correct.
Yeah.
Right, everything after officer.
Yeah. The next one, hours of work. So I think for a normal salaried exempt position, this is the normal wording. Agrees to devote that amount of time and energy, which is reasonably necessary for the chief to perform the duties of the chief of police on this contract. The only other thing that we're looking for is regular shift coverage, right, of about forty hours per week?
From?
From the official police.
I think yours is clear of what you go and get.
Yeah, well, it's.
Well, he's not required to patrol.
Well, not in the way it's written, but I think we are kind of expecting that because otherwise we need to hire a third full-time officer. Because all of these duties, right, and when you read through all the duties, they're all the things he needs to do, but if in a crazy scenario, he can do all those things in twenty hours, it's never in there that we need forty hours of shift time. Or thirty, or forty, or whatever it may be.
You mean behind the wheel?
Yeah, as the patrol.
Or at least on duty, like in the office, ready to go out behind the wheel.
And I don't know the right wording, maybe.
Right, because sometimes they're in the car and sometimes they're in the office and go out in the car when they need to, right? It depends.
But I think, I think we want to leave in because I think it's typical, and maybe Donna could comment, but I think it's typical of like a salaried exempt position. You know, it's the time and energy which is necessary to complete the job. But we also need the hours as the duty officer. And I don't know how to word that, but I think that's our expectation. Unless they're sick or vacationist.
You know, like you said, the chief agrees to devote no less than forty hours per week. Because I don't know, is doing right to typically perform the duties of chief.
Like mine says thirty-five hours.
But what I'm getting at here is if it was police chief, the kind of police chief, and I'm sure there are that never are out patrolling the roads or doing what a typical patrol officer does, he could well come in completely as needed, but we are expecting a moderated staff every day from midnight to midnight, or sorry, eight AM to midnight or one AM. And we are relying on the police chief to fulfill forty of those hours. In addition, not in addition to, but kind of at the same time as he's doing the rest of this, but we need that.
Donna write it up. I think that's the best way to get that.
But are we all on board that we have that expectation of the chief?
Yeah, and it, right, and that it needs to somehow be.
We have to word it right, but yeah, I agree with that expectation and just trying to figure out how to accomplish it.
Well, and we might also want to know the language of police officers, because I don't know if it's called an on-duty officer or the patrol officer, but whatever that is, we need that, unless they're dedicated.
Right, it's separate from on-call, so it's, it would be an on-duty officer, I would think.
Yeah, or duty shift officer was the term we used, and I thought that worked pretty well.
But we can ask, and ask what they call it.
But we're on board, that's an expectation.
Yes.
Um.
Do you want to ask Brian how he liked it, or he had an opinion on how much it would be? Or do you think he's likely to just be like.
He may not be the person to ask.
No, I'm just curious, what do you even say? Right, no, that's fine. Yeah, no, I hear you. I just wondered if he, he might know what the correct term was, if it was duty shift officer.
Well, that's fine to ask, that's sure.
It's always, and I mean, it's always been an expectation, and I think it was.
You're just putting on, yeah, yeah.
In de facto.
If it isn't black and white, it's gray, right, it's, it's arguable.
So here's the, if you flip to the next page, this is the, a very related question, number two, compensatory time. So again, I think it's very standard for a salaried exempt employee that if they get the job done, they get the job done. What I'm getting at here is if Brian is officer from eight to four as an on-duty shift officer, can he take compensatory time? You know, if he's out, I completely see where police officers may be all out all night dealing with a call. But then, and then, you know, wants to take eight AM to ten AM because they haven't slept yet, and I understand that. But then we not have a officer from eight AM to ten AM because we need to spell that out.
Who's covering that?
Really, who's covering that?
I would imagine they have to be considered on-call at that point. Yeah, so the guy who had to do a, let's just say it was a bad accident or something that started at midnight, or started at ten when it was your shift.
But went to six in the morning.
Went to six in the morning, and then your shift was supposed to be the eight AM to four or whatever. You can't get there. Is that, so how is that covered?
That's a question. I mean, it would seem to me rationally, you have several different options. One is, the person who's gonna, was going to cover it is covering it, but it's an on-call. The second is you call in with the officers and ask them if they can cover you for a few hours, but they need to sleep, and I don't know.
I just want to clarify, I'm not too worried. I mean, for years, the police department has worked on this, but I want it clarified and.
I think as far as that's policy, so we just need to kind of figure, maybe that should be something that we ask the chief, the current chief. How in the past have you ever had this happen, and so how do you cover it?
Well, another thing that is kind of new, and the chief lives within the radius that we set out for the position, but if we've had a police chief who lived in Monterey and they're responding on-call from their house, that's different than a police who lives.
Right, where she lives outside.
So does that help that compensatory time is actually defined in our handbook? So I see where you're going with yours, but I think the intent of it here is that you have to give forty-eight hours notice.
So it's not defined in that kind of scenario, it's an actual day off, so you have someone covering it. Okay.
And then you have to use as soon as possible, but not later than one hundred and twenty days from the date of when it was turned on.
Well, let's just take this one so far, okay, so kind of like midnight's the end of your shift. You get into this scenario where all of a sudden you're working until four to six AM. How is, how are those hours paid?
By salary, so.
No, just anybody, I mean, any.
Be overtime, it's going to be full-time officers.
So if it's a full-time officer who's supposed to get done at midnight.
And they get stuck on a call.
Well, then does that call switch over at midnight to the on-call officer? And they leave the scene at midnight?
They probably, they probably have, they probably get paid overtime, they probably have a.
It would depend on what kind of call it was. I mean, the chief may end up being there anyway if it was a call like that. Something like that's probably serious, like.
Right, wouldn't that naturally take over where the on-call person?
If the chief sends them home.
But sometimes it might involve more than one officer. Was that serious?
So I'm just curious, I guess we gotta get a sentence from Garrett. As the comp time, I didn't realize, I thought the comp time was more show within a couple of days. I didn't realize it was more like almost like vacation hour where you earn it and then you spend it. So then, I guess if anything, we just need to make sure that that's budgeted for. And then the only other question I have for Donna, I mean, the police chief is salaried exempt, but it's so unique. Because most salaried exempt positions may have to work overtime, which you don't get if you're salaried exempt. But they don't, or they aren't working overtime till five AM or whatever it may be. And how does that work? And so maybe, and I had this question for Donna, just what is standard for police chiefs for comp time? And maybe she can, maybe she'll explain, because someone's dealt with this before.
I was gonna make one other suggestion, because when I was reading over this, I read said normal office hours at such time which the chief reasonably turns will adversely impact the department operations least. I was gonna suggest we put will least adversely impact. Like, I know the least is in there, but when I originally read it, it reads the other way, yes.
Then discharge, I just put in a couple of questions for Donna. I think that seems to me to be the proper procedure, but I will check with her. And is it helpful to define just cause, or is that just mass general law and it is?
Yeah, I think I'd leave it to what the lawyers would argue.
Well, I'm gonna, that's what, I'm just asking. I mean, I hope.
Yeah, I would assume that's what she would say.
I'm assuming this is the.
Why are we trying to override the.
The manual already?
The definition.
I'm not trying to, I just.
Yeah, that'll be the trying.
Okay, yeah.
But we do want. And vacation time.
Right. Yeah. So, the other question under miscellaneous is really probably more of a question for the handbook.
So we don't pay out a sick time? So I would just remember that, because the only thing that they would be eligible for is any vacation time.
So to be paid for unused vacation time, okay.
Earn, I would say like earned unused vacation time? Because some people might think, well, I'm supposed to get, you know.
In other words, if you get three weeks, four weeks vacation for the year, but it's February.
Right.
You don't get four weeks, right?
Right, yeah.
Well, can we put prorated in there? Does that help?
Because that's what we're saying, right? Prorated, we're swaying thus far in the year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
So instead of earned unused, prorated vacation time, unused vacation time.
I don't know the right way to word it. That'd be really a question for Donna and Sophia.
Okay.
But, and I hope our handbook already does speak to that, and the new one will as well.
Later on in the meeting, I was gonna be telling you that I will be sending the new handbook, but I just wanna look one more time at that.
Okay.
Just so you know, Sophia was sick, is sick.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, two on the next page. The chief of police shall consult with and advise the town administrator who's taking over. I just said shall advise the town administrator of the name of the officer in charge. Because I assume they will have already gone through the proper channels to get vacation leave. And they will get an officer in charge. And then, pay details number two.
Yeah.
I just changed the details maybe work during normal time off hours or during vacation time. Because what if there's normal weekend time off?
Yeah, because we didn't used to have that, but now we do, so. All right. Good catchers, senora.
How do we want to proceed? I'll send it to Donna with the questions. What's that?
Do we want, I mean, some of the things. Some of the changes we just agreed on, I think Melissa should add those in, and then it should get sent to Donna. There's no reason to send her the version before the changes we already agreed on.
Here, here. All right.
And maybe get a consultation. Well, it is gonna take a whole week, maybe not. I was just gonna ask if we can make the, I think we were just talking about the, whatever you want to call it, the exclude the vacation leave, or whatever. We should get some wording in there before we send it to Donna, but I don't want to have to wait a whole week to do that, so.
Okay. All right, fuel, fuel count, do I zero dollars in the fuel count?
Nice.
Or not.
I guess the most to blame because I was hurt from the people that approved the budget, I mean.
Yeah, but blame doesn't matter, let's just fix the product.
So.
We're gonna have a blame statement.
Well, what are we gonna have special?
So I actually have an alternative proposal, which I have spoken individually about with Justin and. You can use ARCA funds for this. And my suggestion, I know you have committed everything, but seeing as the community center civilian and the playground are going to cost more than what you allocated to them anyway and are going to require a town meeting vote. My suggestion is that the select board amend their vote to just give them both the monies for the designers that we need because both of them require engineered plans or a designer in the case of the playground prior to us being able to go out to bid. So knowing all that and knowing that it's not gonna happen between now and July first, because you're gonna have to get town meeting approval, because I think both of those projects will come in. More than seventy-five.
Sorry to interrupt, but what we need to do at this point is pay, and I think Torrico estimated the plans for the community center civilian costs like three or four grand.
Right, so I was gonna say amend, amend your vote.
Out of eighty-five. So what we need to do is, I think, follow the course. We allocated the funds to say we have, we're gonna dedicate this amount of money to the community center and or the playground, and then take it back. We can presume or guess that the bids will come back in higher. But there's a big difference between needing to go to town meeting for the last ten, twenty thousand dollars, whatever it may be, and pulling all the funds out from under both those projects, other than three or four thousand dollars for the engineered plans. That's my opinion. Um, we don't, I mean, we don't know these things because we haven't, we're nowhere further along in the process because we haven't secured an engineer. But if the plans are gonna cost three or four thousand dollars, it's a small part of eighty-five or a hundred. And I would feel, I would not feel good about committing funds to those projects in that amount and then pulling away all but the engineering funds, which is a very small.
There, there is a third, I mean, there's a third possibility, which is since we know they're gonna run over, we don't have to pull it all, we could pull enough to deal with it still.
Do we know they're gonna run over?
From the people I've been talking to, yes. I mean, the proposal for the parks came, was a hundred thousand dollars, so you, you're already over, you only gave them seventy-five thousand, so. If all the RFPs or bids are ever come in, I can't commit, you guys can't commit to anyone because you don't have enough funds to pay for it.
And, and it's entirety.
Right, and the, the pavilion is the same thing, you only gave them seventy-five thousand, now we're gonna take four thousand from us, we only have seventy-one for a project that they were estimating was gonna cost eighty-five, so again, you don't have enough money.
Actually, we did, we did say that we were gonna play with that last ten, and so we just don't know. And I would like to see the plans move along in the procurement process and get put out to bid. And at that point, that's a different story, if we get a two hundred thousand dollar estimate for either one of those projects, we're in a very different spot. If we're four grand short because we spent it on the uh engineering plan, I mean, I just don't wanna make assumptions and pull money away. I would personally call a special town meeting for the middle to end of January and ask for the money from free cash, that's just my opinion.
So I, I have two follow-ups, the first one would be my um, what if we go that long? How do we pay for the fuel between now, because we're at zero, and then? Because I, I, this is like, remember, I'm a newbie about moving, like, for me, I'd be like, hey, from this, yeah, I'll put it in there, but we can't do that, so. Um, I, I mean, I know that, but we have to have a way to pay the bill in the meantime. And my second thought is, um, I, I am concerned, well, it would happen with fuel. We've already had one special town meeting. I don't feel like I have enough of a command of the budget and what's being spent to be, feel confident that. I, I don't wanna end up with five special town meetings this year, right, like, I'm just worried there's more, more of this coming down the pipe and, and maybe that's doesn't, maybe it shouldn't be, but I'm just expressing my concern. Um, do, do we have any sense of other budget lines that are running close to the line?
Yeah, so the only other one is the assessors, because they underbudget it.
Okay.
Um, to answer your question about where you would get the money in the meantime, it would require a reserve fund transfer, and they only have eight thousand dollars off. Um, I just wanna add one more thing on the community center for that, because it's the one that, the proposal that they gave you for eighty-five thousand dollars did not include all the additional things that need to happen, so the plans, which is four thousand dollars. The person who's going to excavate um the, for the puddings or whatever and, and, and doing the grades so that it's, it's uh flat there, doing the handicap accessible access to the ass man, whatever you're gonna call it, to get there, doesn't include the electrical, it didn't, I think it included maybe the concrete. Um, it didn't have one thing that it wasn't supposed to, so there was an overreach there, but yeah. It didn't have the electrical, so eighty-five thousand was not a realistic, so, I mean, I, I, I got a paycheck on it that it's going to come in more than you approved, that's why.
Well, it is and it's not, but it, I think there was money for the slab, which may well have included grading for the slab. Um, I don't know where it is proposed to be on the property, but I assume a ramp if it's close to that uh parking lot. With me, it's our area, it wouldn't be, I mean, I just think that we should proceed with getting the engineer, drawing up the plans, putting it out to bid and see, and see where that, where that brings us, and I don't, I wouldn't write over projects running over budget. No one likes it, and I don't like it, and it's not a good thing to do, but we don't even, I mean, we can't even have a good sense. Right now, we're not going over budget, we're just getting plans together and putting it out to bid. At that point, that's a different, that's a different question.
So what you guys is just, I just wanna make one last point to you, so I know Justin's gonna argue we didn't do it with the vehicle, but. Any big purchase you've made here with a building or a construction, like the library, or you did town hall or whatever, has gone to town meeting for a vote, so that the town can decide if they want it, and plans are usually brought there, so they can see, like, when we did the library, it was a big thing that everybody looked at and they could make comments on. We already know, I, I can say without, with almost certainty, that both of these projects are gonna come in more than you have allocated out of the ARCA funds. So we are not going to be able to pay for them or sign any contracts until you go to town meeting. So why not just put the whole project in front of town meeting and use ARCA for things that are needed right now? That avoid a special town meeting that is probably gonna cost you about a thousand dollars roughly, okay?
Which, which gonna cost us, oh, town, town, the special town meeting.
We gotta mail out warrants, you're gonna have to pay staff to be there, there's um.
So right now, both of these organizations have funding for their studies.
Well, so I'm suggesting that you amend the previous vote you made to say that we are still giving you money up to, to say five thousand for both of them, so I think the study.
Because we're not gonna expend all of that money with our fuel.
No, no.
So what would we be looking at?
What's the total we gave to the two projects?
About a hundred and eighty thousand.
That was the.
I can, I can.
No, no, about a hundred and sixty. Like eighty.
No, it was like, I thought it was seventy-five and seventy-five, I'm gonna check on your numbers.
Yeah, um, so.
So if they still have enough funds to do their engineering studies or whatever, feasibility studies, to then come to the town with the whole plan and the dollar value of the whole plan. We could theoretically still have a hundred thousand of ARCA funds to then soften the blow.
No, we could have a hundred and sixty, because the engineering is a small.
I understand, but we don't.
But what we're saying is, let's say, yeah, what's the.
Understand, but if we need to come up with fifty grand to pay fuel.
I think.
I think you're only gonna need about thirty. I would say, I would say if you, if you agreed to the amendment and then you agreed to up to thirty thousand for fuel, I'll only use what we need to, because we're gonna, whenever there's a storm, anything that's snow and ice related is gonna go to snow and ice.
Well, that may not happen this year.
I, I hope it doesn't, but.
I also, to speak, Susan had a question, what are we gonna do between now and January? I was under the assumption that we could hold on to a bill for a week or two.
A week or two.
Yeah, I mean, I cannot pay.
But if you take, we don't even have a special town meeting until mid-February or whatever, so why?
Well, I have a date, I have a date Saturday, January twenty-first at one thirty PM. Thirty thousand for, for fuel from free cash.
So what's the total, because I'm not sure, I don't get how.
Well, because you put a range, so I, do I do the bottom range?
It's our free cash right now. We don't need every penny of that.
It was half a million before we started spending it, now it's like four or forty.
And if you're, yeah, and if you're gonna go to town meeting, that's not gonna be the only thing up there, because you're gonna need assessors. You probably should increase the reserve fund as well, because you don't know what's gonna come up at the end of the year.
What, what, what in the assessors' office?
Um, expenses, they, they, they under-budget their expenses, not anytime they order something from Staples or whatever, they don't have the money to buy it.
Did we level fund that or what?
They, they actually lowered their budget.
By how much?
By the amount we're over.
Yeah, I think, let's just say a thousand, I would have.
So it's like a thousand, so it's like a thousand dollars.
So if we, if we don't do a town meeting, they're still gonna be holding their hand on their ass. Because we can't use ARCA funds.
But they're not gonna need eight thousand dollars worth of supplies, so we could use the reserve fund for that. Or you could use ARCA funds for that as well, if you wanted to, but I'm not suggesting, I'm suggesting that fuel is a.
I mean, if we could, if we could flow till May.
That, I mean, that's what I was thinking, like, what, I, we're gonna, we need, you put ranges up there. But if we allocated a total of close to, what was it, eighty-five and seventy-five, it's like one sixty, right? If we allocated one sixty for the combined projects, if we took twenty of that and used it for fuel, because if we're, I think, if, at the time, even if it was both those part of the payment of costs, we were still short, right? We were hoping the projects were to come down, I'm guessing the projects are likely to be more. So we would have had, it would soften the blow a lot, taking the twenty might mean not having to do another special town meeting, getting our fuel cross across and allowing the, the projects to go forward, to get their engineering, to get the RFPs and the requests for bids, to come in with a real project plan and let everybody vote on it. But this, it's a lot softer, right, it's a small gap that town will be voting to.
Approve.
Approve. And that sort of does two things, it's like, I don't wanna go back on it either, I believe in both those projects, even if I don't like the playground plan as is, I still wanna playground.
I'm, I'm hesitant to believe that we can't get a, a playground for, what's the range on there, eighty to ninety?
Maybe it's eighty-five to ninety-five.
Eighty-five thousand dollars?
To nine, to ninety-eight, rather.
I mean, I hope someone can put a playground in for eighty-five thousand, I, maybe I'm, maybe I've lost my mind, but that seems like a lot of money for a playground.
Only have playground, the old school, dismantle and bring down there. It sits there, right? Is that funny?
Uh, it's only funny because like every, the, the quality of everything, grades over time, and by the time we got in here, it probably doesn't meet current standards. The standards, they just keep changing with everything.
I know we're one of the old slides, it's, it's like fifteen feet tall.
Perfect.
But I don't know if it was from, well, fire company or from the school.
But let me say that special town meetings are the absolute worst thing that a select board can bring forward to people. It makes it, and maybe this year would be the only time that they wouldn't think that we're a bunch of idiots. Due to the past few years. Uh, if we can help it in any way by not going back to ask the town for more funding and then possibly still having to ask for more funding, uh, uh, we need to find that alternative. And seeing as how these projects aren't gonna come to fruition until the minimum of annual. I, I think this is our, this is kind of our opportunity to pay that bill off without putting anybody else at risk, asking the town for more funds when it's already in our basket and letting these two organizations understand that they were gonna need additional funding to some degree anyway. And we still have the majority of it in place, but we had to temporarily rob it to get this account up to par, and it's one of the more important accounts we have, because without this fuel, nobody's saving the road. I mean, my, my take would be to uh, to amend the vote, take out forty of the entire amount. Not on one or the other, but uh, in, you know, twenty-twenty, let them underfully, tell them exactly why. And then uh, we'll still have all but the twenty-twenty that we're gonna have to ask the town for some anyway, and we'll then supplement that amount with the amount that's left over. I mean.
Forty maybe more than we need.
Yeah, I think you.
Rather have the forty and the thirty and need thirty-eight. Just, we gotta stop being two penny wise, five fours. You had the opportunity to get forty, take forty, momentum, so if somebody wants to write you a check, take it.
I mean, look, if, if at the end of the tech, the day, it turns out the projects are under and we only spent twenty, we could put the twenty back, right?
I mean, it's possible, I, I don't know, the pavilion is, is a different story, but the playground, not being able to get done for eighty-eight? I don't know what kind of playgrounds it will be for eighty, if it's done with eighty thousand.
I mean, I looked at that plan, I couldn't believe it was honored, so.
Well, it's just being a flat lawn, the way they're promoting everything, two-foot slide.
We'll just buy some falls from the hours to learn.
Not even. And that's what, propane lawn. Oh, so it's just, so didn't that? Yeah, I would make, I would move that we amend the ARCA fund allocations and um snake forty thousand of it away and put towards the fuel. And um, I don't know what else I would say.
I'd say.
Yeah, I, I would say, I talked briefly with Melissa about this on Monday, I would say that I think we should probably post it, put it on the agenda for next week, um, and not blindside.
That's fine, awesome, all right, then I'll um.
But I, I will put it on the agenda.
How, we'll pull my motion back.
Uh, rescind?
Rescind.
Okay.
So let's bring those votes back in next week, I think once they understand what the issue is.
I mean, I think they're gonna still be pushing for what they want, and I understand that, I would in their place.
And we'll push for them at, up the top of the hill.
I, I believe the projects, I'm not rescinding.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I, I understand where you're coming from, I didn't, I never wanted to call any special town meetings.
I know, you said that, you actually said that on the occasion, so.
I thought the fuel, if we do call special town meetings, I'd like to keep it.
No, then also maybe we get two other things popping.
Well, we won't put them on. Or you get the assessors on for a thousand, I don't know what the other thing.
Then we're kicking that down the road.
The reserve, we could, we could.
Because if we got the eight in the reserve fund, that we could fund that. By taking forty, using thirty, we still have ten, they've got the eight for that, everything is smooth until May.
The only other, the only other question I have is, all things considered, is I know the renewable energy working group is applying for a, for the Metta grant, have we heard back, we haven't heard back? It's probably gonna be a little while.
And, and I don't, I don't know if the grant had actually opened up yet.
That was the question and answer period was what happened there.
I thought I, Peter was looking for my signature for the application with Judy, Eddie?
When they came a couple of weeks ago?
No, no.
I didn't see anything on the signature for it.
A, a couple, no, it was a couple of weeks ago, I guess.
So who did we give the money to allocate it? Community Center, Playground Group, the Light Study Group.
Historical Commission, you gave four thousand for the Black Sil Road, which they've already started, fifteen thousand for the Renewable Energy Group, ten thousand five hundred for the Historical Society, and then two ranges for the playground and the community center.
And the previous two, which were the vehicles.
So we, we do twenty from the two big ones, leave the rest alone?
There, and there was already about ten thousand floating between the projects, between other.
Right, because we didn't expand for sure.
That we didn't, so I mean, we didn't, Harris, that, that would kind of clean that up, for sure, um. So.
Because we're short.
It's kinda like the building commission's office, we, we just need to discuss until it's clear. People may feel like, you know, you guys are abandoning us or you're against us or something, it's like, no, here's the clear reasons why we're doing it, and only these reasons. We will support you at the top of the hill when the time comes, we'll get the additional funding, providing a heavy slide.
I understand, I, I understand, Scott, I just, the only, the only thing uh is, I don't know about, about the pavilion, but. We're gonna say the playground's gonna come in over budget, and I just wouldn't, I'd be, I guess with costs and everything, I wouldn't be surprised if it came in over. I also wouldn't be surprised if we're, we're in a spot where we could have been finding the playground to be built, and now we're waiting till annual town meeting, because to me, eighty-eight thousand to build a playground seems like a lot, but that's just.
If it comes in lower before town meeting, then you'll be able to do it, right?
Yeah, no, I would just love to be in a spot where we had the bids back, and we have a little bit more information.
Absolutely, but we don't, yeah, so when you, when you're not, you're not, you gotta do what you can.
We don't wanna put it directly into the fuel line?
No, no.
We could just pull it, I did only draw what we needed to, so the ARCA.
Did you follow that?
Uh, partly, yeah.
If we agreed to, to set aside forty of the ARCA funds and not allocate them right away, they don't go away. We could draw what we needed to for fuel, and the rest will still be there, so some of that money could end up going back to the projects if in fact we don't.
And it should, I mean, we agreed that that was.
No, I know, I was just out, I was just saying, it's not like we're allocating something that we won't be able to allocate back.
Perhaps we should have said to the playground committee, we, we want seventy-five or less, just, that's the plan. You know, a hundred grand for playground, what is, you know, twelve kids in town, it's a lot of money, right? So let's get something that's, that's official for fifty to seventy-five, I mean, you think fifty thousand dollars for playground, you think you'd walk in and it would be like Lolly World?
You wish.
So I, I, I think that's, let's wait till next week, we'll get folks in, notify them and.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna put that we're adjusting the AR, the ARCA fund allocations on, on next week's agenda. And Melissa's gonna continue with the procurement on those two projects. So hopefully we can have some engineer pull address as soon as possible, um.
Is that community pavilion, do they each, they want concrete or is it just a deck that could be built?
It's a concrete slide.
It has to be concrete.
Well, you gotta have concrete, I would think you would want.
You better hold it on the green, go back and see the deck that they're tenting. Go back and see the deck that they're tenting on.
Yeah, the dirt.
Nope. So, wooden.
Oh, is there a deck?
Forty by sixty. We used helical piers and built pressure-treated frame and decked it. And it's flat, perfect, it's never going.
But there's a tent above it.
They have a tent above it.
And we're talking about supporting a roof system.
Oh, that's fine, it could, it would get incorporated into those helical piers, overheat, point load, you would design in your framing to sustain a four-by-six or an eight-by-eight that's anchored down for wind lift, sheer lift, it would be structurally built correctly with a truss roof over it, say it could be a gable or it could be a embrow or whatever roof style you wanted.
And then there's a pressure-treated wood as a deck.
As the deck.
What's the pro-con deck versus concrete?
Concrete doesn't have any maintenance ever, right?
Unless.
Fracks.
Yeah, well, that should be, that should be pretty much available to retain that through proper rebar application in the form.
Plus, it's not getting directly hit by weather, it's just getting temperature.
I mean, the con, no, the concrete versus the pressure-treated decking, um, could be a, a wash.
And, well, yeah, pressure-treated is through the roof.
No, pressure-treated is the cheapest material you can get as far as decking materials. You start going into like the Trex, that's where you get a sixteen-foot board for a hundred and thirty dollars. So, think about decking your own house, it's, it's madness using that stuff, but they swear, oh, it lasted thirty years, you know, it's only five years old. I don't know how they tested it, it lasted sixty years. It seems to be, so, I mean, concrete may be the way to go, and in which case you probably do like an Alaskan slab situation where the perimeters have a two-foot berm of concrete under to hold any point loads, and that's just, and then those anchor bolts would be set at intervals needed to hold the post base down, et cetera, et cetera, and then you build the framing load.
So, I just wasn't sure why there might be, why would be an event, because the deck would seem like it would need more maintenance or.
Well, the deck could, would need maintenance at some point, for certain. I mean, it is undercover, but, uh, prevailing winds, driving rain in, uh, anything made out of wood is subject to the eventuality that would happen.
Alright, so this will be on next week's agenda, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And.
You know the size of that.
I don't know.
I did, was it around a twenty or?
Twenty by forty or?
Twenty by thirty?
I think the large end was like forty.
Slab is estimated at twenty, but I don't know. Material and finishing.
Twenty by forty.
Okay, so that will be on next week's agenda. Uh, item seven is the MMA Annual Meeting and Trade Show, so I think Susan had mentioned it, she might wanna go, Melissa and Sophia, and if, if she's just okaying the registration fees.
Are you, do you, are you, were you interested in?
I'm thinking about going, but it, I'm not sure.
I know, I, for me, it depends a little bit on the weather. But, yeah, what, what would we be allocated for, for, because it's two days, right?
Yeah, the early registration fee is two twenty-five, it's, it's done early, it's in Boston. And hotel is two oh-two and eight, or two twelve for the double. Anyway, we can, we have money in select board expenses, your town administrator expenses.
I have money in my expenses.
And you'd think we have money in select board expenses to pay for select board members? Yeah. No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do a hotel. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do a hotel, I would just have the registration fee, yeah.
Um, and I might not have the retirement.
No, my sister was out there, my friend's.
And I think I, or either I'd go stay with John Leving or I'd get a hotel in there, so.
Alright.
What comes to that?
Boston.
Boston, Boston.
Boston property.
Actually, Boston.
The Sheridan. I'd love to be able to type. Soon as I get like.
Two oh-two for a night at the Sheridan?
Just crossing the market.
Wait a minute.
Here we are, you're in the hotel basement by the elevator shaft.
Two oh-two for the Sheridan?
I know, last time I didn't have a very good view.
Hotel rooms in Boston, we're like four or five hundred a night for a little night. A whole section.
I think when I went last time, it's like.
Right.
So, the town administrator, are there any? The town administrator.
Um, so I will be sending you a draft.
In what?
And then I do have one issue, um. We have an employee who is still within their probationary period because of extended, but Jim and I have been very aware of continuing problems, and we'd like to sever the relationship. We don't have filing powers on bringing you to now to see if we will grant that, since it's still within the probationary period, and hearing will be required.
That's your role, right? It's you and HR.
No, right now the select board hires and fires.
Right.
Because this person is still under their probationary by extension.
Right. I'd support it, but I've been in on the, on doing issues all along.
Right, I, I don't wanna bring it, I don't wanna bring it up, but if you, if you're willing to trust me and I'll tell you afterwards.
Yeah, I mean, we shouldn't deal with it in exec, in executive session, it, obviously, if we really do.
But I think we just delegate if we don't have to.
I'm good with delegating it, I'll, considering it's still on probation, period.
Let me, let me just email Donna, and I think that's something that we can do, I just wanted to double check to follow the procedure, because it might involve a vote, the select board to actually delegate firing authority.
So, first you was doing that just in case, because I think.
I was gonna say, we wanna do it tightly.
Susan's aware of the person, we actually wanna do this before.
I, I would say that it would be good to vote to delegate it pending Donna's approval.
So, about time.
Yeah, if, because if we vote now and we, you context Donna out of our meeting, I'm suspect one of them to pass.
I would prefer, I would, personally, I'd prefer to, I mean, unless there's a risk to health and safety, check with Donna, the process for doing it, because we've never done it before, um, and maybe the person could be rescheduled or whatnot for this weekend without.
You want the person to come in? Oh, 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 they're shipped.
Like that?
I think that would.
Oh, 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 now we should do this immediately.
And it would be, I think we should just do it, and it would be.
I understand.
So.
I, I think we should just do it. That we delegate the authority pending approval by Donna.
Yeah, then ask that question as soon as possible.
What is the question?
Or is it legal for us to delegate that authority during probationary period to the town administrator?
Yeah.
Town administrator.
Oh, and, yes, he'll be. But if you're there, then, you're doing obvious behalf, so I think we really just need to.
So, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
He's just writing it down.
You delegate authority to terminate employee to TBA and department head?
Yep. It's not permanent, it's for this one's. For probation, for a probationary.
For maybe probationary employee. Is there anything else I can say? At-will.
I think that'll do it. So, I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Okay, the motion carries.
Are you stating or?
Yeah. So, you have delegated the authority to terminate employee to the town administrator and the department head of the department for probationary employee, who is also at-will employee, um, contingent upon town council's approval.
Said.
Of the process, yeah.
Yeah.
And I will, and I will follow with Donna.
Okay.
Okay.
And just so I get an email, you send me an email with the response.
Yeah, you don't get any emails?
I think, I think you were being funny then. He's not gonna answer it, but.
I answered Monday the other day, I just don't know if I'm real.
Okay, is that it?
That's it, yes.
Okay, review mail, correspondent's number, eleven-thirty minutes, oh, we're, we almost hit two. Okay. So. I feel opposite.
Do you really?
Yeah, feels longer.
Right, wait, what?
So, everyone just read through, and if there's anything else you wanna change or any changes that you don't mind. Melissa, if multiple people corrected Faye, it should just be Faye.
Yes, and so, and if going forward, Justin, if you're able to send them to me where I have them in front, I will make sure all the duplicate things are taken.
Yeah. I can't. That's right. So, in the new number ten, I just have, uh, Justin spoke to building commissioner Donna Trico to clarify the situation. In a recent event, another inspector insisted that he does not report to the building commissioner, and then just delete that next part.
Right.
I don't think he probably reported anywhere.
Right.
It was presented to justify Donna that the building commissioner should be a department head and other inspectors should report to him in issues. Discussion pertaining to the program of this modification was discussed by the select board.
Period.
Yeah, and then, I just wanted to clarify, so the next sentence doesn't exist, which is mostly all read it out except for one thing, and then select, and then select board doesn't exist. And then it should just say, Justin had filled out a town council contact form regarding legal issues related to the matter. Just, Melissa asked if there was the option to delegate.
An alternate.
To delegate supervision of the inspectors to the building commissioner.
Right, yeah.
So, that's how I'm gonna write, to delegate supervision of the other inspectors to the building commissioner. And, we go wide speed. The fuel count was at zero point zero, and the select board discussed previous of the pipeline's information, town clerk to serve as.
Melissa?
Uh, move to approve, oh, minutes at eleven-thirty, twenty-two, amended. Ball vote?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous approval of the minutes as amended.
Um, as unanticipated business, I wanted to throw out there that we should be thinking about which of us wants to, in that upcoming fiscal cycle where we're doing the meetings with all the departments, do we wanna sign, you know, choose which groups were gonna participate in?
So, I told Melissa on Monday, I think, to avoid favoritism or the appearance of favoritism, I will not participate for the library, fire department, community center, tax collector, board of health, and.
That was another thing.
That was it.
That's another two, poor guy.
What's that?
So, I'll tell you what I have you guys on right now, so good, um, I have Susan on, the assessors, accountant, treasurer.
Assessors.
But you're accusing yourself of.
Your member.
Okay, so I have you highway.
Each department is coming into me with a member coming into the, a member from the select board.
Right, um, and then I have you on tax collector.
Why a member?
Town clerk, but, and that's really just because of the speeds right now that I have these guys before.
It's just the way we've been doing it, um.
Okay.
We did last year like this, and they've been doing it for a few years, maybe not back to when you were in select board, but
Um, I don't want some of those, like, just tell me.
I would like to be in on the MCC.
We've had that discussion of should it be the whole.
Well, I have you on the.
And that consensus has been.
And the library?
Yeah.
Not to, and then, what's typical is if.
I'd be happy to oblige tax collector, treasurer, assessor, but I'll do it.
The guy's like, I'm saying, says I'll be my sophomore, sophomore in office, so she'll probably never see the board. But if the highway department's looking for new truck, they usually come and present to the whole select board.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have a strong.
I know, but I'm just saying, if it's gonna be one of us three.
I don't have it in my name, that's where I was.
What I, what I did was like, I knew you wanted to do the community center, so I.
And also, I'm not accusing myself from like, the tax collector's office supplies budget, but I'm just saying, if it's gonna be one of us three,
The only day I have.
think with tax collectors, you're probably, you were shooting.
And, I don't, like, you have schedule.
Is your schedule gonna be pretty flexible in the last two weeks of, of December? So, the ones I have left, Justin and I have you with parks, planning board, and building, and police. Unless somebody else wants, I think police, we decided you should probably go do, because you got a lot of questions.
And I wanna go with parks.
You wanna go parks. I don't know if you prefer building, or, I think I did it just because I have planning board coming in at three and the building was at four, so I just.
Yeah, I can stay for building, Melissa.
I'll do building, if you want, that'll raise you up.
No, I can do planning, building, I'll go.
Okay, that's up to you.
So, the ones I have left are assessors.
And when is this?
Well, right now that one's potentially for morning. I, I'm setting up the notices today.
I'm a daytime meeting person.
Okay.
So.
Most of them are the, spread out throughout the day, no later than four right now. So, why don't you guys just tell me, because I still have to confirm that the groups can make the times that I'm asking. So, I got assessors?
Sure.
I have good questions.
I got council and agent.
Who's older, you don't need to.
I don't know, I'll choose COA. Will you do fire? Or you want me to do fire?
No, I'll do fire.
Are you okay?
Yeah. Yeah.
And then I've got cemetery.
I took COA, you take cemetery.
I can, I can do that, I can do that, we did the time at the cemetery last.
Okay.
You learned all about cemetery.
Tax collector, something. What did I get, I got MCC, library.
Are these meetings, like, the tax collector is one independent, in the, ended meeting? No other meetings?
Well, no, I'm gonna try to schedule as many as I can.
In that, like, that same day, that same morning?
Yes.
How much time does each?
Like, she'll probably take fifteen minutes.
So, then right after her, we could do another one.
Right.
If we're here for fifteen, we ought to be able to commit to an hour.
That's my goal, but some of you guys, although, the way you, I'm, I'm, that's my goal, I'm in with duct tape on my mouth, okay?
Yeah, what we wanna do is listen.
Who's, who's tax collector?
I'll do tax collector.
I can tell you that's on a Tuesday, because that's when she's here. Uh, board of health and ConCon.
I'll do that.
I'll do ConCon if anyone else wants to, I'm curious about the agent.
And then I've got the tree ward, we won this last one.
So, when you actually have me on, now, the T S Highway, our agent is Kim.
Yeah, kidding. Excellent. Well, we have, were you on the board when we, when that account was running short, when we made that? Yeah, you, you were.
They never came forward with a proposal.
No, and I did ask someone about it.
So, we asked them to increase fees, and we said, run, run the account to zero, and if we need to make an appropriate should I any time of meeting, we'll do that.
Kim has been amazing, I mean, she's helped my business immensely back when I was just a citizen. And without her guidance, I would honestly say that the ConCon was in disarray, she was the glue that was holding it together. There's a lot of people that didn't feel that way, because I think she was outspoken maybe. Or she, people felt that she did things that she wasn't supposed to. But, she got things done, and that's, to me, is quite a record.
So, what do we got so far?
So, the only remaining one is tree ward.
Who's the tree ward? Winston?
Last Pierce, last Pierce.
I might pick too many, because I'm interested.
That's right, no, you just.
I don't know, we'll just say no, let me just.
So, on the capital plan, it says Emerald Ash, or the Ash Board of Mediation?
That is, that's a chance.
Well, so, I saw in the highway budget, are we gonna put that in the highway budget? There's no chance you could pay for Emerald Ash Board of Mediation out of chapter ninety, I think. There's no chance you can pay for Emerald Ash board mitigation out of chapter ninety, is there?
But I don't think that.
How much?
Want to give the chapter ninety to an elected politician, I mean.
No, but I saw that in the highway department, it's in the capital plan.
I don't think you can, I.
Well, take a second look, because in the capital plan, it's like thirty grand for Emerald Ash mitigation.
And where is that? What is the purpose of it?
You should cut down a bunch of trees, like you said, chainsaw.
Like that or like a long root twenty-three?
Yeah, like when you walk Blue Hill Road.
But are they trees that need to come down to do public safety?
That's the.
Once the ash board gets in there, yes.
I just cleared eighty-eight trees out of that backyard.
I know, you told me that, I was like, wow.
So Justin has six, Scott has four, what are Scott's tax, board of health, fire, and?
Yeah, I, I need to dump a few guys, Scott has assessors, tax collector, fire department, and board of health. Alright, so.
So what else do you have?
I, I just gave me accountant, and he took tax collector, uh, accountant, treasurer, and clerk are on.
Accountant and treasurer are gonna be the same day.
Okay. So does somebody else, you want me to take clerk and somebody else takes accountant and treasurer, that'll give you five, and somebody else five?
Accountant and treasurer will be remote.
Remote.
You don't, what'd you say, I do or you?
I don't really, do remote.
Justin.
That'll be a Monday morning at nine.
Oh, definitely Susan.
Okay.
No, my mornings are, I can, like, eleven AM.
No, that's fine.
I got, I mean, eleven AM, the animals need to get fed.
Do you want me to stay with the clerk since I've been poking in at, or you wanna do it with Scott since he's clean?
I mean, I don't mind the clerk, but I don't think clerk's gonna have.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be a problem either.
Discussion.
I mean, no, but it could be very interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'd like to know what happened, I don't feel like I have that in my nose.
Clerk position, so it could be very interesting.
So these conversations are their proposed budget forthcoming?
Yeah, and I think. Here's another thing, here's the thing to keep in mind, if you're at one of these meetings, and there's a big, interesting thing or something you wanna bring to the board, we'll meet with them as, as a board. So if the accountant says, I need a twenty thousand dollar raise, obviously. They should come make their case to the board and the finance committee. Because you can't, no one can ask on their own if he needs.
No, and if, if, there's no action being taken other than just listening.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah, well, you're receiving a proposal.
And asking questions.
Right, but that's it, that's it.
No, nothing's being approved or denied.
Correct.
And it's a preliminary conversation.
Right, so we're just basically, uh, the interim.
Well, we're receiving a proposal, and then, I would assume with. A portion of these, we'll meet with them as full boards, if they're, uh, defending a large request or something out of the ordinary comes up. But if it's a. If it's not, if nothing out of the ordinary comes up and there's no reason to meet with them as full boards, we just accept their proposal and we accept or deny it as full boards, but not necessarily with them present. If we have questions for them, we can email them or ask them, we can do another meeting.
Right.
So who wants the tree ward then?
I'd be, I'd like to do it, like if someone else wants to go for it.
I mean, it may end up being when I, when they can agree to a schedule, you, you know, you may have to switch around anyways, but I'm gonna do my best to keep them all kind of together.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Not yet.
Just one second. Last night's meeting, the policy of the capital plan.
Is that, that's on our agenda at this point, right?
I thought that it was.
We're gonna take it.
Set again today.
But I don't think it's.
I didn't mean today, I meant in the future.
Because it, it didn't, we couldn't have put it on the, it's not really unanticipated, and we can't really put it on the agenda.
Yeah, and I just, I haven't had time to look at it.
Well, here's, um, here's the way it looked back in twenty seventeen going forward with fiscal year twenty-seven. This is how it was.
Yeah, it's more similar to what it looked like last year.
Right.
Right, um, I'm just curious, can plan look like this again, I don't know what you handed me last night.
Yeah, I know, the finance committee wants it by department on tabs.
So this is department, but what it needs to have, here's what we need from the finance committee. They did only things that are coming up in the next five years, and I remember when I first got handed it, I'd like, we're missing eighty-five percent of what the town owns. What we need is, and they can generate this based on what's in their stock, can we please get from them, I, we don't wanna see funding sources at this point? Because they put down whether it's ARPA or chapter ninety or this or that, we don't wanna see that, we just wanna see every, not if it's gonna come up in the next three years, everything, and then when we expect it to come up.
So I will send you that, there is a, they did the new spreadsheet, it's not on one tab like that, you'll have to look at the bottom, it does have it going out, there's a summary page first, and then there's like town hall.
But I know that Frank and Eileen can get that kind of report out of what they have, I know they can.
This was, this was action. And then on top of that was the estimated budget, the levy limits.
That we still have.
Personal, I mean, all of this, which is the bible that you have to have in order to figure out.
That's in my budget worksheet when I start sending that out, when I start getting numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I just went through and I was like, I know I still have all this, so.
Wow, you kept all that stuff, I'm impressed.
Well, I knew that someday.
You were gonna do it again. It'll be back quick.
I was like, okay, so that was ten years going out.
Yeah.
But I just think that the mission statement should just be that, uh, that the capital policy is to, is to have a good handle on the next ten years overall expenses of capital. And where the funding might come from, and what the limits are, and what they, you know, just, I keep it simple, I don't know if I've had.
They, they have, they have that, they just. Or any of that.
And also weird last night, it just seemed like they were, like, we were getting locked down, locked down by, by the verbiage of the policy, like, policy should just be due diligence needs to be done, you know, for ten years going out.
Justin likes his policy.
Well, he can have that policy, but I mean, it just seemed like it was just kind of cloudy.
I didn't do the cap, I have not done the capital plan policy.
That there was just a lot of stuff in there that's just like.
I would.
Their responsibility to just like.
The capital plan of policy.
I think it's all part of the budget process, and I think it might, you know, change year to year.
Well, what I, what I would do is, these are the things that matter, but.
Like creating the forms, I think was a good idea, because that, you know, stretches the questions for everything, what you're gonna be looking for, but I think the policy itself just complicates things.
Motion adjourn.
Seconded.
Yes.
Yes.
So yeah, I found the.
Did you vote?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at two seventeen, yeah. Did he?